Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start the meeting off with congratulating Katie McCormick on twenty years as a jailer, which is a big feat. Twenty years certificate, it's awesome.
I'm gonna take a couple of these pieces and I'll add in one more.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit why you started?
Uh, well, I originally was teaching preschool and just was looking for something different and decided to give this a try. And still here twenty years later.
And you got something different.
Yeah, I did. Yes. Some of my preschoolers were mouthy. These guys can be mouthy too.
Well, congratulations and hopefully have another twenty years.
Hopefully.
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll start out as Drain Trustees. Courtney's not here, but we do have a one thing I would like to at least get done. We have an invoice for Hennecker's. Total work completed as a twelve thirty twenty-four is eighty-three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Need a motion to approve that.
Second, this is this is concerning DD thirty-six lateral seat.
Yeah.
As as we had an extensive meeting last week concerning this. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, you guys, aye and or nay?
Aye.
All ayes, sorry.
I was just looking, it says that there was two, two claims.
Hmm, absurd.
Oh, oh, that's the things that we.
That's what we paid. We opened those last.
Yep, got it. Do you want me to read the minutes?
If you'd like to.
Then then that will all be done. Uh, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular sessions as trustees of the Drainage District with the following members present, Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Luke's, Ashley Bosch, and Betty Ellis. Also present were Deb Lucas, Deputy Auditor, and Courtney Morris Drainage Administrator. Other interested parties present was Tom Dorsey, Larry Mazdam, Cole Disney, John Holmes, Dan Hennecker, Larry Hera, Bob Ritter, Jacob Weiss, Dave Keller, Joey Keller, John Keller, Dean Keller, Maury Graham, Al McHale, uh, Robert Watts by the Zoom, uh, Steve Jackson, Tim Marker, and Wright County Monitor Zoom. Uh, motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to call the meeting to order motion carries. The dress, the trustees held an informational meeting with the landowners of DD thirty-six lateral C regarding repairs being done by Hennecker Construction. Cluse provided a complete timeline of the project and explained the procedures that should have been followed but was not. Repair work on the lateral estimated cost of forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, just under the limit for the legal requirements to hire an engineer. However, the work was turned out to be more extensive than originally estimated and the cost had grown to eighty-three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents by December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The final cost is now estimated to come in at ninety-six thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents plus an estimated twenty-three thousand four hundred for hydro seeding of the ditch banks. The remaining work will be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Cluse explained that when a repair reaches fifty thousand dollars or more, an engineer's report must be acquired per Iowa code. With the original estimate coming in below this threshold threshold, a report was not required before the repairs began. An engineer's report is estimated to add an additional thirty thousand dollars to the overall project cost for work that is already complete. An engineer's report would serve no purpose at this time, who stated. At the, um, all the costs will be assessed to the landowners within DD thirty-six lateral C for the classification on file, which includes the city of Clarion. Uh, Morris shared that there is drone footage available on the county website under drainage uh, of the lateral pre-repairs. Um, and Hennecker Construction also has drone footage of the lateral post repairs. Cluse does not question the work that has been done and has not heard any complaints concerning the work. Landowner stated the cleanout is not due so much to slapping as it is, uh, as it was to silting. We have an extreme amount of silt anymore, and this cleanout will probably not cure the silting. I just want you to realize that, Cluse responded. That was the reason for extensive overrun of the estimate. Um, was estimate was thinking that they could go in there and dip it that out, which would have left an almost ninety-degree wall, which leads to slapping, and they normally ask for a two-to-one slope. Hennecker stated, there is a lot of sandy soil in there, so that is where we are getting the riprap and we'll and we will place. Instead of just dip out, Hennecker's Construction did a total restructure of the dredge ditch due to not being able to hold the bait once they started digging. The next day, they came back and it was slapped in and due to was slapped in due to much weight and the sandy soil. It has been addressed with the contractor, the requirements for communication in the future, so this does not happen again. Landowner question, uh, there is a lot of city water that comes in right there. Is there any cost associated to the city? Who's answered, there is. There are, um, on the classification, they they are on the classification. So the portion of the city that drains out through DD thirty-six lateral C, they are assessed. Landowner question, I have fertilizer and anhydrous on both sides of the ditch where I'm affected. Now it is covered with several feet of not very good dirt. My yield is going to be affected next year and probably years to come. What recourse, if any, do I have on that reimbursement on fertilizer cost? Um, Cluse's answer, there was a procedure for damages. There is a procedure for damages, and that would be under damages. Uh, uh, and that would be under damages. That is a cost to the Drainage District. My recommendation from serving on a watershed management group and being a farmer that has filter strips, my first recommendation would be a ninety-foot filter strip along it. I think that would also help us with silting in. It is not going to help from the standpoint of the silt that would come from the city and that area, but it would help to stabilize the banks, I do believe. And it is relatively attractive price that they pay. The last ones that I put in was three hundred dollars an acre. That's each individual farmer's choice, whether they want to farm up to the bank edge or if they would prefer to have filter strips. Yes, there is a process for being reimbursed for damages. There is a limited time, a time limit on claiming the damages and what documentation that is required. Outside of the easement, uh, there would not be any damages that would be paid. The easement is typically fifty feet from the edge of the ditch. Cluse, he stated, the purpose of the meeting was to inform the people who are paying for the project, what is happening with the project. He explained at the landowner's voice that they want an engineer's report because they don't think it was done right, then we will spend twenty to thirty thousand dollars more. Larry Mazdam asked who was going to pay for it. Cluse responded that the landowners would be assessed the total cost of the project. Landowner question, what percent does the city pay? Morris stated that the city of Clarion has roughly one hundred and eighty-eight acres in the district. Landowners questioned how many total acres are in the district thirty-six. Morris responded roughly one thousand six hundred eighty-one acres. Uh, Cluse added, there is ninety-five tracts that encompass thirty landlords. Jacob Weiss asked about tying into the district asset and putting an intake on the back of his property due to runoff from the Iowa DOT property to the east, creating a swamp-like area. Cluse informed him that he has the right to drain into the district asset. Landowner question, where do you go from here? What is the next steps? Who stated that the next steps are completing the project and leveling the spoils. Dan Hennecker added that it will be spring when the project is completed and that and that they ended up pulling some of the dirt out and hauling it away that was along the road because there was not enough room to spread it. He stated that he did not include the removal of the dirt and did not charge for it because in return, they will sell the dirt. There is riprap that needed to be placed, some tiles that need fixed and seating. Rasmussen asked the landowners present if they wanted an engineer engineer's report to landers, anders, who landowners responded, no. Landowner question, are we on the hook for the bill over the fifty thousand? Cluse responded that the landowners are on the hook for the whole bill right now. Now, otherwise, we were are talking about legal proceedings. Uh, landowner question, what started the project in the first place? Was there a complaint? Cluse stated there was a repair requested for slapping in the ditch and some tiles that outlet into the ditch that were broken down. Landowner question, had the ditch been cleaned out before or not? Cluse responded, it has. Landowner question, how do we avoid this type of situation moving forward? Rasmussen responded that anything that's going to come in upwards of forty thousand, we're going to have to look really closely and possibly put an engineer on it because we should not go over the fifty thousand dollars without an engineer's report. Who's added what, without a landowners meeting? Um, who's added, without a landowners meeting, then it would be up to the landowners to to determine whether or not we get an engineer's report. We have the authority as trustees to do something up to fifty thousand dollars without without informing you. That is written in the code. Morris stated, according to the Iowa code, if a repair is going to exceed fifty thousand dollars, the board must have an engineer's report and conduct a hearing. Cluse explained that he would conduct a hearing and would have the decision of getting an engineer report to be the landowner's decision. Morris responded that it is not a choice, it is a must. Robert Ritter asked if any supervisor looked at the ditch other than the drone pictures. Rasmussen responded that he did look at the ditch and he looked at it after Hennecker got started too. Landowner question, if we get really bad flooding, um, spring rains, how bad is the slapping going to be with the bare dirt on the edge? Hennecker responded that it depends on the kind of rain, and it could happen. There is no guarantee on it. Landowner question, is this going to be due to in a one-time payment or is it over time? Cluse responded that it depends on the amount that is assessed to the landowner. Anything over five hundred dollars per track can be spread, and typically the trustees choose either five or ten years to spread the payment. Morris added that there is a six percent interest if the landowner signs up to waive it. Uh, there is no penalty if you sign up and decide to pay it off sooner. Ellis asked if anyone wanted to have a completion hearing when the project is over to hear how it ended. There is no interest from these in attendance. Morris was asked to send a letter out to the landowners on what the total project ended up being once completed. Motion by Cluse, second by Ellis to approve drainage claims for payment. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting, um, of January sixth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. There were no work orders needing approval. Morris presented the following two drainage invoices. Uh, for Mazdam Construction, thirteen thousand four hundred and six dollars and fifty-one cents, and the second Mazdam Construction on DD seventy-six may relief one thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty cents. Motion by Cluse, second by Bosch to return the meeting. Motion carries.
Thank you, Betty. Any additions or corrections?
There was, um, as I was reading, uh, it'd be on the page one, two, three, one, two, fourth paragraph down, when it says Cluse added, uh, without a landowners meeting. Um, I would, I think that should say with a landowners meeting, so be the fourth paragraph, one, two, three, fourth line down. Do you guys have your copy?
I'm going to tell me.
Yeah, I think that should be with.
Yes. Should be with. Let's go prove us corrected.
All there?
Aye.
All eyes. We had no work orders. You have a motion for adjournment?
Let's go adjourn as Drainage Trust.
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, now we'll convey convene as the Board of Supervisors. I need approval of a tentative agenda.
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Uh, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting? Yeah.
January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees. Give me the minutes from the drainage meeting, see the drainage district minutes on the county website. Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine forty sixteen AM. Members present were Rasmussen, Cluse, Bosch, Luke's, and Ellis. Motion by Ellis, second by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Motion, or sorry, approved claims for payment. Supervisor Cluse told the board that Eric Edie with Nymaster Good PC agreed to be the drainage attorney for Wright County. Motion by Cluse, second by Ellis to appoint Eric Edie as the Wright County Drainage attorney. I apologize. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to receive the auditor's quarterly revenue report. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, second by Luke's to appoint jailer Israel Rivera as a civil process server. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Ellis to approve the liquor license for Claremont Country Club pending dreum. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, second by Bosch to appoint Gerald Stephen Carlisle to the Heart of Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on secondary roads department. Motion by Cluse, second by Bosch to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? Office stand approved is red. Claims have been around. Fine, we'll go to our nine fifteen. Uh, let's see, Dwayne Asby. Hang on, gotta get to it. Dwayne Asby to give Wright County Charitable Foundation annual update. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you, Supervisor.
How are you?
Thank you.
Morning, sir.
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Yeah.
Man, again, thank you for allowing me and Danny Bowman, our president of our foundations, and present too, and Gerald Stephen Carlisle, our office support with the economic development office. Uh, this will be kind of new to Ashley and Lynn. The rest have kind of heard the, over the years, kind of the report, but if you would, uh, first in your little packet, if you could pull out the sheet that has a list of funds, which looks like this here. Just going to take a glance through that. That is the current funds that we have under our umbrella of our Wright County Charitable Foundation. And as you kind of glance through those, just to recap, we started this process back in December of two thousand and four, so time goes by, it's been now here over twenty years since we, uh, established ourselves and and we're actually under the sponsorship of a few folks of the county. So we've, uh, come a long way for over the twenty years. So again, referring back to the, uh, list of funds, as you can see, there's a variety of funds, both working with individuals, companies, corporations, nonprofit groups. And as of the end of the year, as I noted below there, currently have thirty-nine different funds under our umbrella. And again, we are an affiliate of the Community Foundation of Greater Wyoming. They are considered our host foundation. So as of twelve thirty-one, as I got it stated there, this short of nine million dollars in total assets. And we've granted out money through our foundation because basically two purposes of our foundation is working with fund holders to try to preserve wealth transfer within our county fund in our county to go to charitable causes. And through our, either through granting, through our, the the funds listed, or through the gaming revenue that we get, uh, every year, we granted, uh, this short of four hundred thousand, as it states there, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand plus. I'm referring, I took a couple of copies of, uh, I thought would be kind of good synopsis there, just kind of tells you what what talks about the county endowment fund program, what is a community foundation, and additional information on how county endowment funds are used, of that kind of a good snapshot. Also, I do have, every year, the Iowa Council of Foundations puts together a fund throughout the entire state. If any of you would like to take a look, this is a well-put-together booklet that covers all the foundations across the state. They're more than happy to, uh, I got free here if you want to take a look at it at your leisure. Okay, now let's take a look at the other, um, fact that I got there is pertaining to the grants. What we got there is we keep a summary of all the grants that we've given out since, uh, the beginning. Our first granting cycle was the spring of two thousand and six. We won't actually go through all of those, but first I wanted to kind of take a look and see who got what and how they were distributed. Talks about location, total project cost, mount funded. But then, I would refer you back to the very last page. The back page is obviously blank, but if you go right before that, on the lower portion there, it gives a breakdown within our communities within Wright County, uh, which also included your grant week because there is a overlap of a couple, uh, grants that pertain to Wright County, but this had a, they ran with the address. But anyway, that shows the total number of grants we've given out, uh, to present time. Total project costs on the applicants that received a grant. And then it shows on the lower right-hand column that we've granted out, uh, through our gaming revenue that we receive, that we receive one million, a little over one million eight hundred thousand, uh, over the, let's say, over the twenty years. So that is a si- significant amount. Then referring back to maybe this, uh, sheet of the funds where I got listed, the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, again, added for that, uh, either twenty twenty-four, that includes the our normal gaming revenue grants that we give out, but also, um, various fund holders also grant out money, so that's why maybe, maybe through our gaming revenue, we've granted out something over a hundred thousand. But in total, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, we'll say that's another, say, in round figures, say another two hundred and fifty thousand that actually came through, uh, various other funds there, so the grants. So the impact we make throughout the county is more than just the, through the gaming revenue, now that we got a, uh, good, uh, uh, sum of, uh, fund holders. Any questions at this point?
Do you do your granting just once a year now?
Yeah, for the last two or three years now, or whatever, we went to just a, uh, one annual.
It used to be every spring and fall, but if I recall that right, two years ago, you went to one time.
Yeah, you're correct, correct. You got.
Thank you.
So, uh, Berlin and Ashley, as you can see, in twenty twenty-four, the Charitable Foundation granted out a hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And so you go, well, wait, that doesn't match with the three seventy-nine oh seventy-five that Dwayne's talking about. But some of these, uh, individual funds also receive monies through this because it's all of these dollars are put together and and invested. Um, so the money is working for us. So, uh, for example, uh, COC Fund, uh, Clarion Church of Christ, um, we are a part of this fund and, uh, you can receive up to, I think it's five percent, uh, of.
Of the previous twelve thirty-one balance, right?
Right, um, and then, and you can grant that out, so, um, it's a good investment opportunity.
And there are a number of affiliate, uh, just for figuratively speaking, there's, uh, I think forty-four affiliates now associated with Community Foundation of Greater Wyoming. We've been with them since the beginning and, uh, Daniel, I feel, and now Darrell Stephen feel very pleased with the services they offer. They take care of our investments and that type of thing. And over and also a source of, uh, information, administrative efforts and that type of thing, but, uh, there are, there still are a good number of counties that just have a county foundation that just receives the gaming revenue and then take the gaming revenue and then grant it out without really building, uh, up, uh, funds like we have on that, say, thirty-nine fund. They're just kind of a in-and-out type, uh, type foundation. And we're probably in the, on the, on the phone, on the various affiliates that are associated with the one. Uh, over forty-four, we're probably definitely in the top ten, if not closer to the top five as far as total, total assets, so, uh, we feel feel good about that from my standpoint.
When I look at the, the account of establishment dates, it's a little disheartening to see, um, a lack of, I mean, we've had one in the last, uh, four years. Can you attribute that to something specific?
Yeah, I, I think a little bit partly due to some economic conditions and that type of thing, and, and I think that does, uh, relate to, uh, some philanthropic, uh, motives on individuals and maybe, uh, even non-profit groups or whatever. And probably just like anything, once you start getting the ground built, uh, sometimes you can kind of get get some good, good fun, uh, fund account set up, and then after time it starts to taper off a little bit or level off or whatever, so it's, uh, uh, it's more of a work in progress.
Is there a minimum amount that's required in order for someone to establish a fund?
Right, we have a good question there. It's a what we call a seed fund opportunity. Say if an individual wanted to open a fund, uh, but didn't have, say, ten thousand, you can open it up with one thousand dollars. And then as long as you give six hundred dollars each year for the next ten years, that would, uh, again, based on, uh, anticipated, uh, investment returns over ten years with the initial one thousand plus six hundred, you would hopefully be at ten thousand dollars at the end of ten years. And the reason that ten thousand is mentioned, that, uh, if you to have a full, full fund or an active fund, you got to have ten thousand dollars in order to get, uh, some, uh, some of your money back out of it to to grant out from that standpoint.
And in Dow Iowa, those funds are, is a per. Is a per, is a permanent investment, non-endowed funds are, can be taken back out, correct?
That, that's right. And Dean, you're, you're a good student. We talked about this in the past years, but also Dean was a part of the Wright County Fair, the Wright County Fair has an endowment, so. And also like Dean referred to the Church of Christ. So yeah, it's. On an endowed Iowa fund, it's a little more beneficial from a tax standpoint to the donor because they get a twenty-five percent. And we're not really here to explain how the funds work.
Well, it's good advertisement.
That's right. But to the donor on the Dow Iowa fund, if you make a, say, made a thousand dollar donation to a endowed Iowa fund. That donor would be entitled to a twenty-five percent state tax credit on their state tax, so. In that example, it'd be two hundred and fifty dollars of, of a state tax credit, so. Individual had a state tax obligation of, of over two hundred and fifty, let's say they have a state tax obligation of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. They could then subtract off that two hundred and fifty with the one thousand dollar donation right off the bottom. So a, a tax credit has more value and benefit than a state tax deduction. When the legislators created this process back in two thousand and four. The reason they did that, to give a little extra care out there for the endowed Iowa tax credit, is trying to preserve wealth transfer. To try to keep with one state, and now we're such a mobile society of people pass away or whatever with children. Across the country, so to speak, when those, when those assets leave, normally would not only leave your local community, but probably the state of Iowa. And so this is, the purpose behind that was try to preserve a portion of wealth transfer. So for the last few years, there's been, the state legislators have, have committed six million dollars of state tax credits. And it's been, it's gone so well each and every year that those tax creditors are actually used. By year end very easily. If you use the math, the six million dollars of state tax credit, that would equate to twenty-four million dollars of philanthropy, so. Like each year, say if that was the case over ten years, that's two hundred and forty million dollars. Of, that we've preserved within the state of, state of Iowa, that's gotta be for charitable causes. Because any, any of these funds have to go to a charitable cause, that is, you know, like say if Rick wanted to establish a fund. And all of a sudden he wanted to buy a new truck for his business, he couldn't do that, he's gotta go toward charitable causes. And it's, it's, you know, trying to increase the value of, of people living in the state of Iowa and our respected communities to make their lifestyles. More enjoyable, that type of thing, but as far as these charitable causes from that standpoint. And those special orders will acknowledge our current board members and Dennis, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, but Danny is our current president. Lenaya Groom is a board member of the Rowan area, Kevin Callahan out of Eagle Grove, Adam Borey out of the Dallas area, Kyle Marker from, we'll say the Clarion area. Trish Morris from Belmont, Candy Jones out of Woolstock, so at this point, we got, we're trying to have representation if we can across the county because. This foundation isn't just one community, it's a county foundation, just like I said, so.
You still have a junior member?
Oh.
A youth member.
A, a good question there, that's more from our granting purposes.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
We have youth representing the three different school districts in the county to help. On the granting, granting committees.
That's awesome.
And that's, and Danny knows and Alderon Steven too, that's been a very worthwhile effort. Because sometimes youth have different outlooks when you look at a particular grant and adults do, because what maybe is important to us or adults, so to speak. May look totally different to youth from that standpoint, so it's, it's been a, just a very good. Technique that we've used for a number of years, right now we're trying to have juniors and seniors right there.
Juniors and seniors, one, one girl, one boy, and each one, we rotate each time every year. And when we go to the principals or the guidance consorts. They have just given us the best kids you can imagine. And we, we're always surprised as if the adult, when they go through and look at the grants. As Dwayne said, they look at them much differently. And they are set up in the, they have to come to a, where they actually. Work together against each other, not against, but to, to make certain. That they come to what they, to that particular number. Last year, we went through all the grants, went through one time. And they hit the number exactly. We had, we had six kids, I don't know how anything like that number would ever happen. Of how much we could give out, which was fifteen thousand, we've gone up from seven thousand to fifteen. They hit the number exactly right. We had to go through one time, we didn't have to argue on any points and so forth, so it's, that's been a pleasure to, to be able to work with them.
Awesome, any more questions for?
Tipping back quickly to the fund development, in the last two or three years, including this past year, we also are able to work with individuals. What we call with a legacy fund, a legacy fund is, say a person doesn't want to establish a fund now, but have made a provision for after their death. To, to create a fund, so. It's no confidentiality, like for a very bottom one there. Butch, as we would know, Butch Aldridge, worked with him this past year as far as setting up a legacy fund, so upon his death. There's funds that are, that will be put into that fund. For a particular person, a purpose that he would so desire, so then we've had another. Dwayne Canosa, former attorney in the Clarion area, worked with that, worked with him prior to his death and four, five years ago, so. So that's another type of fund that we can work with from, even though a person may not want to establish a fund while they're living. But they're after that, therefore we can, we can administer that type of fund to meet their wishes. Because it's sort of green, whatever they desire, how they want to have the fund distributed to.
Dwayne, interesting to worry on the Eaton Corporation, where the Eaton Corporation set up a fund as they were closing their doors in Belmont. To provide financial benefit back to the Chamber of Commerce on an annual basis.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up that, exactly. Yeah, because we, we worked with them back, right prior to them closing, they wanted, because they were a long time supporter of the Belmont community. And even though they were going to close, they wanted to still keep something there for good forever type thing, so another example. Also, as some of you know, the Richard, I pointed out this after Richard Jacobson Fund, we, we were able to. Work with that fund and Alderon Steven's worked with, worked with, that been close there too since the beginning when we met with them. But that, there's a case of, had we not been established. It's possible that Jacobson, Jacobson Fund wouldn't, wouldn't have been a reality type thing, so. And that's a significant foundation fund for the Belmont area, because they, that's a. A significant boost for good projects in the Belmont area. Just wrap things up here. Forget anything, right? Yeah, I would say again, as in past years, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to present and give you an annual update. We've also appreciated your annual support and kind of from the fact that you've been our sponsor from. Day one back in two thousand and four, each, each affiliate has to have a sponsor. There's some, some affiliates that maybe, for example, the Extension Service might be their sponsor. But in this case here in Wright County, you folks were, I think, back in the day, as I understand the process, Danny was the Economic Development Director at that time, and. I think the, the, or the contact was between the supervisors and Danny to see if Danny would kind of spearhead to get. Potential board members established, so technically you are the sponsor of our foundation, so. Kind of that said, we've appreciated your past support and I think, and also I always try to comment, I think, I like. Dean and Rick and Betty involved before the previous visits. I think the other purpose we can add to this is, I think we kind of keep. Potential people knocking on your doors as far as some potential desires, as far as in your supporting a particular project. I think you can easily say, well, if you check with the Wright County Charitable Foundation, I think that's been a, hopefully a benefit also to you folks, so.
Yes, it has.
And we're certainly happy to do that from that standpoint, so. Anyway, in the past, so we thank you for your past support and also your past support from a financial support, there was. For a good number of years, you were supporting us, around nine thousand dollars in the last two, three years, whatever, it's been forty-five hundred, but. I think we have, have hopefully displayed the value we give to the county and, and hopefully to you folks, that. You would certainly strongly consider, continue to support us in, in some fashion to hopefully be good to do.
You will be considered in our budget discussions.
And I, we totally understand, you got a, you got a budget, don't get any eaves, we're totally, totally aware of that, but. We would appreciate any consideration, so. So unless there's any other questions, that would be our overview, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to anyone from, for open public hearing or open public want to speak? Now is your time? Okay, moving on, we'll receive the quarterly revenue report from Wright County reporter. Would you like to talk on it?
I would say that, you know, revenues are still down, my biggest generator of revenue is from the real estate market. And the real estate market is down, so are we, so hopefully with that, come back some.
Motion to receive.
All in favor? All eyes, thank you. Review and act on appointment of Grant Township trustee.
There are minutes from the township trustee in your holder.
Yep. The resignation of Gary Martin as the trustee of Grant was accepted. Finding a replacement for Gary, Kent Kirstine has expressed an interest in replacing Gary Martin as Grant Township trustee. Kent was contacted and said he was appointed by Wright County supervisors and he accepted the position.
Motion to appoint Kent Kirstine, unless we've already done that.
I've not done that yet.
Okay, motion to appoint Kent Kirstine. This is one of the ones that is appointable, not electable. Motion to appoint Kent Kirstine as township trustee for Grant Township.
And that's a two-year term until the next.
To finish Gary's. That'd be on the January meeting.
Yeah, let's.
Doesn't say when his term was to expire, on the, on the minutes at least. There's John Campbells is the only one that's noted there, his term expired in twenty twenty-six.
So these are all, on these, they're all four-year terms?
Right.
So it would be the appointment.
For a four-year term? Make that part of my motion.
Go second. All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? If I need to sign here anywhere, she is, is this. You know, if I need to sign anything, there's no signature, just I have it in your file. Discuss and act on approving Amanda Meyer auditor, Joan Schillingglaub AP check clerk. To each have authorization to manage and make changes to the county visa credit cards.
AP's accounts payable?
So.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we ran into issues when Joan has tried to call to cancel like Carl's credit card, she doesn't have authorization to use it. So as of right now, Carl's credit card is still active and can be used because there's nobody around now to cancel that card. So they just, the bank just needs it put in the minutes that it's.
Amanda and Joan are all.
Well, and the bank had told Joan when Joan had called it for her to get approval, but then when I was putting that on, it's like, Amanda is the auditor should. Have the authority, because then if Joan does retire within the next year and a half, like she's planning, we'll have to go through.
Does the deputy not have that, carry that authority?
I don't need that.
No, whether or not, it wasn't whether or not you needed it, do you currently carry that?
No.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve Amanda Meyer auditor and Joan Schillingglaub. Accounts payable clerk to have authorization to manage and make changes to the county visa credit cards. And we should definitely discuss with the elected official that the deputy should probably have that authority too in the, in the official's absence.
Go second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Thank you. Adam Clemmons, Wright County engineer.
First guy here is the bridge project, I gave you a set of plans there. The estimated quantities and construction cost, estimated cost is an engineer's estimate, so please keep that confidential until we go to the bid letting on that. This bridge is south of Belmont, belt, southeast of Belmont on Loog Lane. It's currently a fifty-seven foot span, a three-span timber bridge. We're going to be replacing it with an proposed eighty-foot by twenty-four-foot continuous concrete slab bridge. Letting, we, we've had a little bit of difficulty getting this to, to letting right now. We put it in, we hit our timeline, I think July one was our timeline to submit for NIPA clearance or check plans. NIPA, the office down at the DOT missed the email and didn't see it. And then we started asking questions when we were going to start putting in our final plans. And they said, hey, we're gonna have to push back your plans because we can't get to it for thirty days. So we've done a lot of pushing on the DOT and called a lot of people. This had been pushed back to June letting, which I don't like very well, it was supposed to be a March letting with. The other culvert and paving project that we have, so we have them and working on, as you can see on the front page, April fifteenth letting date, so. Nice thing is, is there is no to-be-shiners on this, so they can start right, right, go right ahead and. Start in the project and not have to wait for to-be-shiners to be on this project.
And is there a ending if they, if it lets on April whenever?
So the DOT will set our late, late start date based on how many days they propose this project to be, so.
We just don't have that?
We don't have that information, they do that for us when we let it down with the DOT. We were letting it locally, we would have that. But since this is using VR, or VR money, bridge replacement money, they, we have to let it to the DOT. So a plan for construction of this summer, along with the Boss Fort Cory Bridge, the Rowan Bridge, where that, that culvert went north of Rowan, and then the fifteen miles of bay. We also have, so busy summer for those, yes. Just need a motion and approval of the final set of plans.
Motion to approve the final plans for project. Motion to approve the final plans for project, ERO S C zero nine nine parentheses one oh six. Uh eight Juliet dash nine nine, a bridge replacement on Taylor Avenue over Louis Creek.
I'll second.
All in favor? All eyes.
I get a signature from each of you in one of those boxes.
No, it's back.
No, uh yes, the the estimates, please, yes. Just so.
Do you need these for anybody else that you have to send first of?
Nope, nope. Next item is a memorandum uh for installation of a private drainage tile in the county road right of way. Um so I've been working with Jay Pogie, Rick, and uh Jay Pogie's contractor. Uh up in section ten of Boone Township, um what they're wanting to do is on the corner of Emmett and Hundred and Tenth. There's kind of a slew uh where it just doesn't drain, it kind of impacts the road a little bit, uh but Jay is purchasing. Uh the farm ground from the his family, um and wants to put in a tri- tile. Taking it all the way to the west to the Boone River, um so this lays out. Um and he wants to put that inside the road right of way, um if possible, so. Um he's tried to work, we tried to go across private ground, across Kent Kiver's ground, uh Kent has pattern tiled it, so he didn't want uh those all cut. Um we're telling uh Jay's contractor to keep it as far back in the in the road right of way as possible, towards the right of way line. Um if if this goes through, uh we've laid out items, uh about twenty-one items for them to um agree to. Um along with this, there was twelve, he needed twelve signatures from the family members inside that agreement. He has all those, I have all those, if you want to see them, um there's multiple pages of those uh that had to be done, and they all had to be uh notarized. So they are right there, um so I will need your signatures too, um if this is approved. So some of the items that he had to go get from us for us was the DNR floodplain sovereign lands, uh Corps of Engineers permit if needed. Uh planning and zoning, uh if if they required a floodplain permit, you would have had to issue a floodplain permit to. Um locally, um they're going to have to, uh if any damage is done to the road right of way from now until fruition. And we cause it to the the tile, he will have to pay for the the repair of that. Um I don't think this that is going to happen, it is a closed tile, it's not a perforated tile that they're putting in, and he said they're going about ten feet deep. So it is way below the um uh roadbed. Um but if it does happen, we have it laid out in here that they are going to be responsible for it. Uh if you see anything else in there that you have questions on, please let me know. The other item is in the northwest corner of that property, they're going to be putting in, you can kind of, you can't really. This is not a very good aerial, but right there where the slew is right here, in that red line, about halfway through, they're going to be putting a inspection. Um terminal right there, so we can actually.
Have you had um either the drainage attorney and or county attorney review this?
Yes, yes, um David Johnson was working with us heavily on this, so I wrote this and he reviewed it and he's put his blessing on it, definitely.
Thank you.
So uh it's encouraging to hear that that's going to be uh ten feet deep. Because somewhere in this corridor is um Sonic Carbon Solutions uh pipeline. I think it's up that road as I.
To the, is it on Davis or in, I want to say it's on Davis, maybe west of Davis.
Isn't Travis Tate's place here just?
In the area, yeah.
In the area, but I want to say that Davis Avenue was their pipeline, on the west side of Davis.
Regardless, it should be deep enough that it shouldn't impact.
Yeah, I don't, and and it terminated, it 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 stopped before that, so.
I think so.
I think he's on the west, yes, yeah, so this is. This is east, well, not even further east, I mean, it's across the intersection.
Yeah.
I think between Tate's and that road is where the pipeline was going to go.
Correct, yeah, west side of Davis.
Very good.
Yeah, I've been out there with Adam and by myself.
And with Jay, we've been out there multiple times, we've sat with Jay's attorney, uh David's sat with Jay's attorney. Um so it's.
And and through your discussions about uh voluntary annexation into the drainage district, just to the south of there. They, the reason he didn't want to do something like that.
Think that there was the ability to, to, because there's a hill to the south where this house is, there's quite a steep hill. That goes right here, that he couldn't get through it that way, so I do, I I want to say that was a part of the conversation.
To get the fall.
To get the fall.
Yeah, I goes to get the fall.
Because you come down, you come down to this intersection, and then it goes out both ways from it, that's. Then there was, and there was a, I don't know if you remember this or when this was uh dissolved, there wasn't a a drainage district to the north here. That took the water um to the north, but they dissolved that drainage district since then, so if he was. Yeah, something like that, I I don't know, but.
Yeah.
So that's his plan, there is quite a sustain upgrade.
Is there?
Yeah.
You need a motion on that, right?
Yeah, yeah, and if you approve it, I'm going to go get Kim to uh, because I need a signature on your guys' page where it starts. As Wright County Supervisors from each one of you um to sign this, so.
It looks uh.
Second to last page.
No, I'm impressed with the.
Subsection.
Yeah, I mean, uh it looks like you've done the eyes and crossed the teeth, so.
It's been a little bit of experience uh going back with this type of thing, so.
Well, and that's, um, yeah.
I would, I would make a motion to uh approve the memorandum for installation of a private tile. Drain in county road right of way uh along.
Hundred and Tenth, Hundred and Tenth Street.
Hundred and Tenth uh between Emmett and uh Franklin.
Davis.
Davis, Emmett and Davis.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All eyes?
Okay, um I'll go get Kim afterwards, when you guys are done, and we'll do all the same, just so we can keep going and guess.
And then this will be recorded with the property?
Yep, that's, and that's the reason, what's that? Okay, perfect.
Bring it up to my office and I'll stay on it later, but.
Yeah, yes. That'll work.
And you're filling all the other blanks?
Yep, yep.
Put in all those.
That, well, part of it's hers. She gets to fill out. Five different times, thank you, sir. He's not, it's okay, great.
Good luck to you. What's saying? This isn't over.
Okay, next item, uh update quick, um guys were out brush cutting ditch burns, um trucks were out cold patching. Um we would rather be using our uh uh dirt patcher, but obviously we can't, because of cold weather, so we can't keep our tank. Uh heated up, but we don't have enough, and then uh where we get it, they shut down for the year to get all that uh asphalt. Um twelve work orders were completed, the one work order, the repair, I wanted to bring your attention to, um as if you go to your weekly completed list. Um they repaired the CAT three twenty-four excavator um uh for a total cost of thirty-four thousand dollars, so. Um inside of that is the cost of the uh material labor, anything that went along with that, so when they got the engine out, they. Um they actually take the core, uh the block, and then we get credit for that, so it actually deducts some of the.
So coming lower than what you expected?
Um for for our normal repair, that when we were doing it, it's right on, um for other stuff, yeah, it was less than. Um it was going to cost sixty to eighty grand for the other options that were inside of that, so. But us doing the work, um the guys were able to pull the engine out, check other things in there, so hoses, uh. Any uh electrical lines inside of there, they were able to get and repair and move around and make sure there wasn't any rubbing, so this was kind of a good thing, so they kind of get very. Intimate with the the engine and the machine, so.
And is that the claims that we've seen in claims today?
Yes, yeah, you would.
I asked about the forty thousand, but there was a ten thousand dollar court charge.
Yes. Yeah, so, um and then we had a little bit of weather last week that we went skipped off, um some light snow.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
I drove down by the bridge by the. And they were, looked like they were, they had an excavator out there tearing the deck off.
They are have about thirty percent of the deck done, uh most of the guardrail off, um and they're going to town, as long as we get good weather. Uh they'll be going, going at it, so that's the nice thing about them being able to do a little bit of free wind work.
Any old business? Any new business?
We just had our new officer's school last week, and that was a lot of good information that was given.
Everybody was there.
Year, it is good information, I would encourage you to go every year as we have done in the past.
Every two years.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
It's very well worth it, I've gone to it every year since I've been on and. Surprisingly, I do get stuff out of it.
Well, if nothing else, you get to meet the other new people and the the opportunity to network with those people. Uh you can learn a lot that way.
On day on meetings. I have I go coming up and I have Eldora this Friday.
Emergency management.
Today, four.
Wednesday I have landfill and Thursday I have safety meeting with Adam.
What time is the landfill one, I've never been to one and I'm the alternate, I was thinking I might attend one.
Six thirty.
Six thirty on Wednesday?
Yes.
Is that at the landfill, is that?
Yeah, correct, yeah, they got a boardroom back in their office area.
I have C I C F on Tuesday and B C A on Wednesday.
I have uh minus on Wednesday and I will attempt to to make the landfill meeting also. Um and then on Thursday, no, Thursday, I don't, yeah, that's it.
Anything else before the board?
Opioid reduction meeting on Wednesday. Is that, uh is there a specific committee on that? Is it the Board of Health?
Uh the Board of Health member is upon that, and then there's.
You're going to discuss these.
Uh we have lots of people.
Farmer subjects, healthcare.
Do we have a supervisor representative?
Yes, but we want to talk to you now or?
Person, you know, should go to that one, but that's up to you, if you want a different version on it.
No, I think that that's fair.
There are seven in the morning.
Well, you said that there's a representative already for the board, huh?
But not for the supervisors. Does that timeout work for you?
I don't always get them to.
Okay, alright. Let's do it, we'll find.
If you could always internet. Wednesday morning, sorry about that.
Yeah, like what happened, well, I guess it's done. These two are pretty loud, it's not breakfast.
Okay, so uh do we have somebody assigned to that board, you know? Anyone, Bueller?
For the opioid?
Yeah.
As many guys.
Was it one?
You want to keep the board out representative.
Was it all on that?
It, I don't think it's on there, it's not on your list.
It's not, okay. Yeah, I've, I would like to, those are significant dollars, I think it's important for us to know uh what they're going to do with them.
And then we have. Here, Bruce.
It is not listed.
Whatever.
You would like to?
Sure.
What's doing, Jer?
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes?
Give the, give service staff members.
You'll email me, so you guys.